Offering of the Pledge of Allegiance led by Rob Donovan.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Good evening. Welcome to the 1,950th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This will be a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting held on Monday, August 22 of 2022. City Clerk Ms. Nash, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Donovan.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember McCullough.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Vice President Toy.
Here.
Councilmember Barr.
Here.
President Jolly.
Present. All members of the council are present this evening. At this time, I would recognize a motion for the 1,949th regular meeting minutes.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Toy, support by McCullough. Is there any council corrections or additions or comments? I see none. Any audience corrections, comments, additions to the minutes? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on that.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The minutes pass. At this time, I would like to welcome Mr. Don Roraf to the podium. He's our Director of Public Works here in the city of Livonia. He's going to update us on the city's response to the recent storm and electrical outages and et cetera. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council. Don Roraf, as you said, from DPW. Just wanted to give a brief update. As everyone knows, we had the storm that hit Livonia last Wednesday, August 3. The storm actually caused the most damage through the middle of the city, sections 19 through 22, so five mile to the freeway, Eccles to Middle Belt-ish, and was kind of isolated into those areas. We started receiving calls about 6 o'clock on Wednesday. There was 22 phone calls that went into PD between 6 o'clock and 8 o'clock. We went out and assessed every one of those calls, prioritized those into a list that we went back to work from. All of that was done on Wednesday evening. Through those inspections and all those calls that came in, we had 11 trees that were down that were blocking nine roads completely. They were completely closed. All those roads with the DPW crews, I'm happy to say, were opened up and traffic was able to flow through them by 11:30, 12 o'clock that night. So I'd like to take this moment, too, to thank my crews. They've been working continuously on the storm, cleaning up debris and doing things. They've been doing a great job. So over the next couple of days, August 4 through the 6, we had an additional 71 calls come in for storm damage needing tree assessments. After we've assessed all of those calls and we've been out to every site, there's 15 to 20 trees that are currently being reevaluated as a possible tree removal from damage that was caused by that storm. Thursday, August 4, DTE actually came out and assisted our crews that day in sections 20 and 21. So I'd like to extend a thank you to them. That's not something that happens every day, but we were really happy that they showed us some love and came out and gave us a hand on that. SOD Solutions is our tree contractor here at the city of Livonia. They were also called in to remove two trees off of homes. The DPW crews have been working continuously on cleaning up this debris and chipping branches. They've been working overtime every night, including Saturday, with three four-man crews out there. We will continue to do that for the next two weeks until August 19. During that time, we'll continue to provide chipping services and remove hanging limbs that are in the trees, street by street, cleaning up any of the debris that's there for any residents or anybody that wants to bring that out from the backyards or front yards or wherever that may be. So once we get past the 19th, we will go back to a call-in basis like we always do for brushing branches. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to give a brief update, you know, what happened, what we've been doing, and the things that have happened up to this point.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I think we're all set. We appreciate the update.
Thank you.
And thank you to you and all of the DPW staff and workers who work with them. Ms. Nash?
Thank you. I'm sorry. Don, I just want to thank you and your staff for all the help you did on the election. Because not only did they do the storm damage, but for three days prior to that, they were working for elections and moving equipment. And I thought about that Thursday morning when you were out, when the crews were out getting trees off cars and out of streets. What if this would have been Election Day? Because I know how busy and how many the DPW crew were out. So thank you. Thank you for always working with us and helping out.
I appreciate that. I'll relay that information. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, the council will go to audience communication. I need to note that audience communication is to address any items that are not on the agenda for this evening. This is items that will not be covered later on as an agenda item. This period of time is limited to 30 minutes. Do we have anybody here for audience communication this evening on anything that is not on the agenda? Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Carrie Bozinski, 9345 California Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Library Commission. I wanted to share with council and the community that we have kicked off our second year of the One City One Book Program. This election is Frederick Bachman's "Angstous People." It's a really engaging novel. It's funny. It's an easy read, but it's also thought-provoking, particularly around the issues of mental health and community. So we think our residents will enjoy it. Throughout August, September, and October, we have a series of free public events that are targeted towards kids and families, young adults and tweens, and then adults of all ages. So we brought you all copies of the book and information about the events that we'll be hosting in hopes that you guys will participate in the programs as well. In addition, I just wanted to give you guys a more broad library update on the facility in particular. If you haven't been in lately or you weren't aware, the glass elevator that goes up to the third floor is broken. Unfortunately, due to regular power outages, it fried the engine. So this is a big unexpected repair within unknown timeline at this point for being fixed. Another issue is that two of the three chillers, ACs, are broken as well. So the library is still pretty comfortable for patrons, but there are certainly areas of the building that are very hot and uncomfortable. And this particularly impacts our employees. So I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention in hopes that it can be resolved quickly for the community and for our wonderful staff.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Your name, please, and address.
Emily Keith. I'm a Livonia resident. I've grown up here and I'm raising my children here. When entering the city limits, the sign reads, "Livonia: Families First." When approaching City Hall, a sign reads, "Be Kind, Livonia." Let's put actions to those words by adopting a robust nondiscrimination ordinance, an NDO that is more than just a symbolic gesture, one that is comprehensively inclusive, one that allows for reparations to be held within the city, which will save not only time but money. Businesses, individuals, and families all like saving money. None of us want to spend a lot of time taking care of tasks that are unpleasant. It is easier for everyone to have resolution by the city instead of Lansing or Washington, DC. We all want to consider ourselves and our city as kind and inclusive rather than biased and bigoted. This NDO is a win-win for everyone. So I'm asking that the council discuss adopting it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I should note, I should have said so before, during audience communication, audience members will be limited to three minutes in addressing the council once.
Three minutes?
Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Darrell Smith. I live at 14006 Brookfield, and I've been living in Livonia for 26 years. So first, I'd like to say how much I enjoyed Shakespeare in the Park, Romeo and Juliet. It was fabulous. It was wonderful. Now, I don't know who's responsible for that, but I think it's worthy of making notes. It was absolutely wonderful. It's the first time I've ever been to Shakespeare in the Park, and it was, I just thoroughly enjoyed it, and the people that I was there with did, too. So thank you all, whoever's responsible for that. Bravo, bravo. As far as, I can't talk about the flag because that's on the agenda, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. As far as the nondiscrimination ordinance, you know, I'm trying to get up to speed on what's going on there. And I don't know if you're up to speed on what the NDO is all about. It's, I know a number of cities in Michigan have that, and it's also not necessary because the state and national laws, you prohibit discrimination. But I understand the value of having a local nondiscrimination ordinance. So I want you to know that I support that, and I think that if we look into it closely, we'll find that it's really worth it for the city, and it's a win all the way around. So can I just say a poem for the rest of my three minutes? You're not, you're not going to laugh at me, are you?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
He doesn't laugh with any of us. It's okay.
Hi, Penny Crider. I'm a little warm. I just came from the senior center. We got a delegate training session, and it's quite impressive. First of all, the NGO absolutely don't need it. We have a U.S. Constitution and a Michigan Constitution that pulls us all together. The way to stop bigotry, stop call, or stop people from treating you as if they are bigots is stop calling people bigots because they have a difference in opinion, okay? The United States, Michigan, the city, we're all supposed to be working together. Stop the division, okay? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Last call for audience communication, going once, twice.
Mr. Chair.
Audience communication is closed. I'll go to the council. Ms. Toy.
I would just like to thank Commissioner Bozinski for the book this evening and also to maybe give us an update on what's going on in the library, perhaps. I've had people calling me about the fact that the air conditioning seems to be warm in different parts of that building and if we could.
That would be more appropriate for the administration.
Right. That's what, I wasn't going to say, I'm going over there to investigate it. I was going to say that. I could do that, you know. But no, I was going to ask that we refer that to the administration, Mr. President.
Is that a motion, Ms. Toy?
Yes, please.
All right. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll support.
Motion by Toy, support from McCullough. Any other council comments on that?
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre?
I guess I'm disappointed that it takes a resolution for the, to refer to the administration, the state of the Civic Center Library. I would hope that the administration would, would be taking care of those issues, and we all understand they're complicated and expensive, but at the very least, keeping us apprised of where we are. And I don't hold Toni LaPorte as the Director of Library Services for the city, and she is, her job is really to run the library, the operations of the library, not the operations of the building. So I, of course, will vote for this, but it's disappointing to me that this requires a resolution for the administration to provide information on this.
Thank you very much. Any audience comment on the referral to the administration for information here? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. So we will look for a report and recommendation from the administration in regards to the Civic Center Library. We'll continue with council communication. Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. Briefly, thank you to the DPW crew. They did a wonderful job. Wednesday, we had a public hearing here at City Hall. I was going down five mile and had to stop because there was a large tree that was east to west, covering the entire Newburgh Road, and on the way back from reading, it was gone, and that was rather a large tree. So great job to all of them. I know there was a lot of trees down from that storm, so good job. Also, there was a lot going on this weekend in the city of Livonia, one of which there was the Highland Games, and a few of my colleagues were there. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it, but I would just like to highlight that one of our colleagues here was wearing a kilt, and it was, I tried to unsee it on my Facebook page, but great job to all of the colleagues that were able to go there and have a good time and support the community. It seemed like a lot of people were there, and I imagine some of my colleagues will be talking about it. But awesome job to all the volunteers and everyone that was doing great things in our city this week. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council? Ms. McIntyre?
Mr. Donovan mentioned the Highland Games. They were a great success. They were the 173rd annual Highland Games held by the St. Andrews Society of Detroit, and I think this was the 20th or the 25th year that they've been in Greenmead, which provides just an excellent venue. But we talk a lot about volunteers, and everybody's busy, and we know that finding volunteers for things is a challenge, and there are always a lot of reasons why one can't volunteer. But very notable that Suzanne Williams, who's 90 years old, volunteers at the festival every year and actually does security, not wrestling people to the ground, security. But very importantly, sitting on the porch of one of the buildings where the St. Andrews Society uses as something of a headquarters for personnel that are involved in the games. And she was there the entire day. It was 90 degrees or so with about 90% humidity. And that's the kind of, that's the kind of spirit of volunteerism. We have a lot of it in this community, but I'd just like to ask everybody to think about Suzanne, who, again, at the age of 90, spent the entire day of the Highland Games sitting out on the front porch in service to the St. Andrews Society and this great event in Livonia. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the council? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Another event that is coming up on, I believe, September 18 is the Tour de Livonia. I received word, this is pretty much a partnership across the city. Information could be found on Facebook, a lot of our social media. I know Livonia Parks from Recreation has something listed. Got word that they are in desperate need. They're trying to get about 50 volunteers. I know there's two options. One, I think, is a seven-mile bike ride, and the other is a 17-mile through the streets of Livonia. It sounds like a blast. If you guys, anybody out there is willing to help out, again, check out our social media outlets and sign up. It's much, it would be much appreciated.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barr?
Just wanted to give a shout out to a couple of residents. I mentioned this a few meetings ago, but Greg and Charity Gold, who several months ago reached out with concerns about the conditions of the grounds at Sandberg Library, went through the appropriate channels within the city, and the city does keep up Sandberg Library, but due to a number of reasons, there were, there were some things over there that just was going to be a little bit before they were done. This couple stepped up, rallied their neighbors, and held a cleanup day there on their own this past weekend. And I know DPW cooperated with them as, as far as getting a dumpster out there for them and arranging to get some mulch delivered that would have been put down at some point, but the volunteer labor was there. And just a great example of, as Councilwoman McIntyre said, just that spirit of volunteerism and, and public and private, public sector and private citizens working together. And they sent me some of the before and after pictures, and it was pretty cool to see. So just wanted to give a shout out to them publicly and to everybody who worked with them. I don't know who you all were, but excellent work. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Anybody else from the council? I see none. At this time, I'll note as the president here that we have new data on items 11 and 13 this evening. And with that being said, we will move to the agenda items. The agenda reflects that we have received reports from the mayor and other city officials. This is a long list, so bear with me. Communication from Jeffrey Bunker from the Clearancefield School District, May 20, 2022, requesting the city to continue to collect the district's taxes for 2022. A communication from Linda S. Jackson, the Secretary of Wayne Risa, dated June 15, 2022, requesting the city to continue to collect the taxes for 2022. Communication from Pamela Lane, the clerk from the Charter County of Wayne, dated June 7, 2022, requesting that the city continue to collect the taxes for 2022. A communication from Karen Bradford of the Livonia Public School District, dated June 13 of 2022, requesting the city to continue to collect the district's taxes for the year 2022. A communication from Barb DiMarco from the Oakland Schools ISD, dated June 6, 2022, requesting the city to collect their taxes. Communication from Brian Broderick of Schoolcraft College, dated May 25 of 2022, requesting that the city collects the college's taxes. And a communication from Jeffrey, excuse me, Jeremy Curtis of the Plymouth Road Development Authority, dated May 24, 2022, requesting the city continue to collect the district's taxes. And a communication from Rachel Eubanks of the State of Michigan Department of Treasury, dated April 1, 2022, requesting that the city continue to collect the state's education tax for the year 2022. Just by note of explanation here, the city acts as a collector of these different millages and tax authorities that affect the residents in our community. These are not things that the Livonia City Council or any part of the city determines, but rather that we act as an agent in collecting them, and at the same time, we collect our city property taxes. With that being said, we will move on to the consent agenda for this evening. The consent agenda tonight is items 1 through 10. These items were previously studied at the July 25, 2022, study meeting and found to require no additional study and will be voted on at one time. At this time, can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll move approval of consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by McIntyre, support by Barr. Anybody in the audience like to address the consent agenda? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The consent agenda passes, items 1 through 10. Going to unfinished business, number 11 is the proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law to add Chapter 01 to Title 11, display of flag on city property. At this time, I'll note that we have new data. There was adjusted language provided by the Law Department after the last discussion of the council with that at the study meeting of July 25. Do I have any movement from the council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan?
I'd like to offer a first read, please.
Okay, that is a first read on that matter offered by Mr. Donovan. I'll note that a first read is pretty much just that, a first read. It does not result in any votes or anything tonight, but a vote will be following if we have a second read at some later date, which may be the August 22, 2022 City Council meeting, the regular meeting that is.
Mr. President.
Mr. Barr?
Yeah, I just thought it'd be worth clarifying. You mentioned the new data about the adjusted language, and since this has gotten a lot of attention. The adjusted language was just some, some confusing wording in one section, and it did not change the substance of what we talked about two weeks ago, which I think people are familiar with what that is. But I didn't want people to hear adjusted wording and be wondering what that was. It was just some confusing wording that got clarified. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Is there anybody else from the council who'd like to address the first reading? I see none. We'll go to audience communication on item number 11. Does anybody wish to address the council on item number 11? If you would like to, please approach the podiums on both sides. Because this is an agenda evening, agenda item this evening, excuse me, the audience communication for this item will be limited to two minutes per person and one time to address the council from each person. Ma'am, you were here first. Oh, I should also say that there is no limit in regards to the length of this, but I would ask you all to respect all of our time in regards to being duplicating and sentiments or knowledge, if possible, if it doesn't add anything new. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Ellen Kane. I've been a resident of Livonia for over 50 years. First, I'd like to say that I believe that City Hall is not the proper place to display a special interest flag. This honor should be held for the United States, State of Michigan, and the city of Livonia flags only. With these flags, all people visiting, working, or living in Livonia are welcomed here. I was saddened to hear people at the July 25 meeting infer that the flag ordinance solely attached to one specific special interest flag, and that is not the case. There are tens of thousands of special interest groups, and by hanging a special interest flag on the city building, Mayor Bosman stated it becomes, quote, "an expression of the city's official sentiment," unquote. With that comes the responsibility of promoting the special interest group. Many organizations start out with great intentions, but as more time passes, some organizations, for numerous reasons, cannot follow through on its objectives. The organization is uncovered as incompetent or corrupt. Some special interest groups implode in scandal and corruption. Recently, there has been discovered an organization that was so corrupt that it had kept most of its money that was given to it by donations. This would have reflected poorly on our city had we flown this special interest flag over City Hall.
That's your time, ma'am. Thank you very much. I have to cut you off at two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
My name is Robert Tenaglia. I will give you my address, 15367 Susanna Circle. I'm in agreement with the previous speaker. I'd like to comment real quick on a couple of things that were said two weeks ago. First of all, one person claimed that transgenderism is something created by God. That's irrelevant in this situation. And another point was suicide by the LGBTQ in high schools. There is a mental crisis in this country. There are no more suicides with that group than anybody else. And not democratic was because it has to be unanimous. I say that's how a jury trial works, and for the mayor to unilaterally put it up, that's not democracy. Flags everywhere, yes. U.S., state, cities have the pride flag, and let's see, we have drag queen shows at military bases, and I would argue or say that we're almost the laughing stock in the world now. Don't feel inclusives? People are, can put flags, signs, bumper stickers on private property, and in my opinion, they are the most protected class in our society against discrimination. Try to be a conservative, Christian, or pro-lifer, and then walk in those shoes. Just a flag? Look around. It's not just a flag. And I would, in summary, I would just like to say that flags are supposed to be uniting.
Five seconds.
Not dividing. And are they special privileged?
Okay, that's two minutes.
I have to stop you, sir. Thank you very much. Ma'am, we'll go to this side. Your name and address, please.
Ginny Krenz, 34075 Pembroke. I also attended the July 25 meeting and sat here with an open mind, listening to the comments of both sides, good, bad, and ugly. But toward the end of the meeting, councilperson Donovan, he presented a resolution, which I thought was very fair, and I think, I feel strongly that government and community should be two separate entities. And by this, I mean that at the City Hall, the government building, we fly the three flags we have discussed. But I also feel Congressman McCullough mentioned taking this discussion further to committee at large, which is where I think it should go. And I was thinking on the way over here that maybe to remain as an all-inclusive city, our Parks and Rec department is exactly that. It is for community, for everybody in this city, and I think maybe that is where, and boy, I hate to say these issues because that really sounds snarky, but you know what I mean. These concerns maybe should go over into Parks and Recs, and because he would have a wider wheelhouse in which to display, to support. I don't know where I'm going with this, but I think you get the gist, I hope. I just wanted to say I support your resolution, and I think that we should stick with the mayor's original words and then take it to committee at large, take it to Parks and Rec, and open this whole city up to everybody, no matter who you are, what you are, just as long you're in a as long you're a Livonia citizen and an American, and that's all that matters. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
My name is Deborah Willlock. I live at one-eight-seven-four-one Lethers. Growing up in Garden City, we had a couple across the street from us. We knew them as Carol and Janet. I lived at home for nineteen years. Carol would cut the grass, Janet would plant flowers. They'd want to help, they'd come and ask my dad. Years later, I went back for a visit, and their house was for sale. And I said to my mom, Mom, she's in, I said, their house is for sale, and the neighbor next door had a snarky attitude. My mom looked at me and said, you never knew? I said, no, I never knew. They were a lesbian couple. They grew up, I grew up, the four of us grew up with Carol and Janet. My youngest brother used to go every Mother's Day and make them a Mother's Day card and take it across the street. I had a baseball glove. Carol came out and played catch with me. When the day that they left, our neighborhood cried. They're great people. They didn't need a flag. We didn't need to make them independent from us. We were neighbors. Years later, back in high school, I was an athlete. As we get into high school and puberty starts happening and people change and people this, people that, nobody had a flag, nobody had a different jersey. We were a team. We played as a team. We wore the same color tennis shoes. We represented our high school. I don't believe this is necessary. My children went to the military. Where's my proud mom flag? My husband is Border Patrol. Where's my pride flag? I rescued German Shepherds. Where's my pride flag? And that's it. I sure hope you think about your choices that are affecting Livonia.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Lori Shook. I live on Granada. I have been a resident here for twenty-five-plus years. Don't know the exact number. But I'm disappointed, yet not surprised, that certain members of our council voted to have an ordinance written to require a unanimous vote to raise any new flag at City Hall, a flag that the mayor and our citizens would want to see raised. There didn't seem to be an issue when Councilman Donavick wanted to have a flag-raising ceremony to celebrate and acknowledge his heritage, which you should. But yet, when a pride flag was raised for just twenty-four hours at the very end of Pride Month, it became an issue, and I think that that's awful. Livonia needs to move forward, not held back by certain councilmembers' personal beliefs. Every person in our city should feel seen, accepted, supported, and raising a flag to celebrate them is the very least we can do, just like we celebrated you. If this becomes Livonia's reality, I believe we will continue to see our population decrease. New families, new businesses will choose to look elsewhere. The vacant storefronts will remain vacant. You've made the local news with this ridiculous move. By this action, you are reinforcing Livonia's image as the sundown city it once was, still acting in a divided, unaccepting way. You will cause pain for certain citizens within our community that's not necessary, and I find that unacceptable and basically disgusting. I don't think it should move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next? Would you like to address the council?
Yes.
Okay, your name and address, please.
I'm Alex King, and I live at nine-eight-zero-six Berwick. I would just like to say that over the last two years, I've really come to understand how important fine print is. I didn't use to read the fine print, but I've been paying much closer attention now, and we have to pay attention to the fine print that's not able to be read. So I understand that some people here today maybe didn't attend the previous meeting in which Councilman Barr addressed the issue of Councilman Donavick's raising of the Albanian flag and made mention that he felt it was problematic at that time because it could potentially be divisive in some way and maybe doesn't represent us in a collective, community way. We have to, I've said it before, I'll say it again, we can't let our emotions continuously guide us in our decision-making. You have to pay attention to the small print. You have to understand that there are two sides to every story. You need to know what's going on behind the scenes before you make judgments about people, straight people, gay people, religious people, whatever it might be. And I just wanted to make sure everyone understood, this did not come up at the time of the flag, the gay pride flag raising. This was something that had happened prior to that. Again, all due respect, dividing people based on who they are or how they identify doesn't solve any problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir, your name and address?
Yes, my name is Daryl Smith, and I live at one-four-zero-zero-six Brookfield. Regarding flying flags, I was thinking today how beautiful some of the neighborhoods in Livonia are. And now, there's a particular house a couple of doors down that is so neat and tidy and perfect, you know, totally lacking personality, but perfect, beautiful, you know? Now, as I go along, then I see these houses that have beautiful flowers and they're, you know, they're not professionally gardened, but they're beautiful, and they have different flowers and everything. So you have the manicured house, and then you have the house that's kind of like an English garden. If you've been there, you see that they just kind of love flowers, and they're everywhere. So my point is, is those sanitary houses lacking any inspiration, and God bless them, there's a lot of work there, you know? There's a lot of work in keeping that house nice and tidy, and it looks good. But the whole, if the neighborhood was full of those houses, it'd be a pretty boring place to live. Now, as far as I'm concerned, the city is the perfect place to offer the personality of the city, and City Hall is a great place for it. But someplace, Councilman McCullough recommended that there be some way to do this, perhaps a separate flagpole, you know? But I think that there's lots of folks, you know, I mean, you could think about a lot of people that by no fault of their own have their own special interests, although I think special interest is a misnomer, but whether it's autistic people or anyone else, I would love to see a flag fly for autistic people, for so many other people, and some, you know, whether it's Christian or, you know, non-Christian or whatever, people could get involved in the pride of who they are.
You're all set, sir. You're done. Thank you very much.
All right.
That's your two minutes. Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Yates. I believe that the issue of raising non-government flags at City Hall is about so much more than flags. It is about how that decision reflects the values of our city. I want to believe that Livonia is an arms-wide-open city, as I've heard the mayor say many times. But if this amendment to the ordinance passes, it will reaffirm what many of us already feel, that Livonia is not a place where everyone belongs. I understand that the intent of this proposal had nothing to do with a pride flag, but I also believe that the intent is irrelevant when the impact is hurtful. So if you don't believe that flags are the way to express support for the diverse people of Livonia, then let's discuss some other ways. I did some research. Many cities have issued a proclamation that recognizes June as Pride Month. Many cities have updated their nondiscrimination ordinances. Canton has an inclusion task force that provides guidance to their leisure services department and a coalition for inclusive communities that helps protect its citizens from hate crimes. Ferndale hangs the pride flag in city chambers year-round and is a community partner of Affirmations LGBTQ+ Community Center. They also have a racial equity action team and have facilitated community meetings to learn about the real experiences and challenges of the members of the community. Jackson and Westland have a Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. The Novi Public Library has a DEI committee and appropriated approximately forty-six thousand dollars towards the purchase of diverse materials last year. Clearly, you can see that there is so much more we could be doing, so much more we should be doing. Please consider the voices of the people you represent who are telling you that they need change in this city, and they need you to do your part. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
I'm Penny Kreider, Livonia. So first, I feel it's really important when it comes to this flag, or any of the flags. The three flags that we have represent the unity of the United States, of Michigan citizens, and the city citizens. If there is property that is paid for by the citizens of Livonia with our tax dollars, not all agree with that, hanging flies, flags, excuse me, whatever they are other than the U.S., the state, and the city, that represents all of us. But when you take a very politicized organization, and we've had one here that did a march, and we weren't asked if we agreed with that, and it was, we had snipers up on the police, up on the buildings and everything. If we don't agree with this particular flag, what it comes down is we're called bigots. There's division. They say that we hate them. Livonia is a city of love. The people here work very hard to be very welcoming to all citizens. But lately, I notice there's groups that are coming in, and they're calling people bigots because we don't agree with what they have to say. If you want to fly a flag, that's why we have private property. Fly it on your private property. That shows pride in whether it's for autism, for LGBTQ, Black Lives Matter.
Fifteen seconds.
Your hometown, where your family was from. If it's taxpayers' dollars that paid for the property, whether it's parks or anything else, it doesn't belong there because we don't all agree.
Thank you very much. He was in line a little bit longer, so I'm going to go with him. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Yeah, I'm Bob Suter, three-one-five-six-nine Bennett Street, Livonia. Just returning from the last week's meeting, I thought there was very good discussions between all the groups, and I still support the, we still should stay with limited government and stay with our three main flags. And I just, being a U.S. veteran, you know, number one flag for me is our flag, and I really have to just personally bring this up. If you can't even stand and face it during the pledge of allegiance, maybe you should leave the room, some people in the audience, so I just wanted to voice that personal opinion. But to stick to the three topics, we need to stay to the three flags, and that's it. We have a lot of city events where all these groups come together. There's a lot of events you can sign up for, volunteer for. Groups of all kinds are at these events, and they are in the Parks and Rec. I don't think we need to add more government, but we can do more participation for these groups in the events, and they're open to all. And also, I hear a lot about this DEI and everything. We have a human relations commission here in Livonia now. That's new. So we've already increased our spending for these new groups, so we need to limit our government, we the people, and reduce our taxes and maintain a great city, and only maintain the three flags. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Your name and address, please.
My name is Kellen Winslow. I want to once again thank Councilman Barr and Councilman Donavick for their proposals at the last meeting. I think that this ordinance will be a great step forward for Livonia. There's been a lot of talk about inclusion, not just in this meeting or the last meeting, but in our world in general, and I think that it's a very simple problem to face when we really take a step back and look at it. There's only one way to make sure everyone is included, and that's to stop singling people out. All of the special interest groups and flags only cause more hate and divisiveness in our world. Separating out people because of who they are or what they believe is not including them, and it's only separating them from the group and making people who have differing opinions feel unwanted and unincluded. I believe that the three flags that have been proposed to fly at City Hall are an example of a way to unite people by not separating anybody. Anybody who lives in Livonia is going to be a citizen of the United States or living in the United States if they're not yet a citizen. They're going to be a citizen of the State of Michigan and a citizen of the City of Livonia. So all three of those flags represent those people whether they like it or not, and that's a very easy way to make sure everyone is included at City Hall. I also think that taking on the, or the Parks and Recreation Department, taking on the task of making people feel included also separates people because the government is still acting.
Time. Thank you very much.
Do you want to keep time with me?
Yeah, I can keep time. It's fine. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
Deb Christensen, Livonia. I spoke two weeks ago and back again, still a social worker. I, boy, I'm very passionate about this issue. I work with young people. I am a parent of previously young people, young adults now. I want to be in a city that feels welcoming to all, and whether or not that is about the flag or not, but I think that the decision-makers here in this room, you guys, have an opportunity to seize for our city because, again, people are watching. I think the thing that I want to address is, as a social worker, I went to my master's program for the macro social work, which means outside of, like, individual. And that's what a city is, okay? And within a family, you have like the micro system within a family. And I was thinking about this over the last couple of weeks and mostly about safety because, again, I work with kids who are suicidal, and some of them are in the LGBTQ community. And I, okay, so back to the systems. My question to all of you is this, and some of you might have older children, some of you might be child-free by choice, some of you might be child-free because of not choice, some of you might already have small children at home. What I want to ask you is this, is your child, or even an older family member, is your house a safe place for them to come to and to tell you, I am gay? I feel like I'm not a girl. I feel like I'm not a boy. Is your home a safe place to do that? And then I need to ask you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm done? Okay.
Two minutes. I have to keep everybody at the same time. Thank you very much. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
I prefer not to say.
I need your name. If you want to address the council.
Oh, Marie, but no address.
Please proceed.
I just wanted to bring, I agree with the young man who was up here beforehand. I really just wanted to bring up one other point, which was kind of the litigation piece. So let's say we start, we say, okay, we can hang special interest flags. I think I said this last time, you know, where does it end? Because who gets to choose who has a right to fly a flag? You know, if the LGBTQ pride flag can raise, but you say the Sacred Heart of Jesus flag can't raise, well, who gets to choose what the sentiment of the city is? If there are Catholics in the city, then that flag represents them, any flag. So if some flags are obviously going to be told no, who gets to choose that? And that's going to open the door for lawsuits, and I don't think that that's helpful for the city for a financial reason. So that's kind of something that I wanted to bring up because I think that would impact. No matter what you believe, it's not helpful for the city. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, I see nobody further for audience communication. Audience communication on this item, it's closed. We had two things proposed at the study meeting for item number eleven. Mr. McCullough?
This would be, I'm trying to figure out, because I don't have the notes in front of me, but sending the matter of diversity, equity, and inclusion for our city in general into committee of a whole for further discussion on what measures we could do.
Support.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion by McCullough, support by Toy. Anybody from the council who'd like to address this further? Mr. McCullough?
I think, you know, going back to last meeting, and I think in general, the same sentiment in this room is, you know, outside the flags, we could do better at making Livonia welcome to all, and for that, I think we could do some more work. There's been a lot of good points on all sides. We need to roll up our sleeves as a city council and really start working together and breaking down what I call silos. You know, there's a ton of silos, and you know, at these meetings, I would expect a lot of you to be there and assist and have an open forum and discussing these. You know, are they going to be, they're probably going to be. You know, are they going to be, they're probably going to be tough, hard talks, but I think we need to have them. At these meetings, it's easy, you can have two minutes. We need to dive a little bit deeper, and I think that is the next step that is before us.
Anybody else from the council? Ms., Vice President Toy?
Thank you. I think Councilman McCullough began to explain, for those of you that don't know what Committee of the Whole is, we usually meet upstairs, the president will call that meeting, and most of us, if not all of us, will usually attend. And we get into a deeper dive, as been mentioned, about various topics and the topic he had proposed. So that can bring in both sides of an issue, or one side of it, or whatever we may choose to look at and study in here, people, again. And they're not limited to their time, although Jim, as you know, keeps, or council president, does keep a very tight meeting, which I appreciate because that is, he's very fair in that regard. So we will have those discussions as they deem it necessary as we move forward. And so we appreciate any cooperation you'd like to. Certainly, you want to leave your name, address, email, whatever you prefer. You know, even back there, I think there's a list, as well as Sarah, who's our legislative person in our office. If you just call the office, that will be helpful, too, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President. Mr. Barr?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just think it's important, before we vote on this, that we read the actual wording of the resolution that's before us, which I assume is what Councilman McCullough intends to offer, and you can correct me if he's wrong, and I'm pretty confident of that. It just says, "The council does hereby refer the subject matter of alternative ways for recognizing various groups of the community to the community of the whole for its report and recommendation." So that's the motion that's on the table. So, which I know that's what you intended, I just thought it was important to get the wording out there so people understood.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the council? I see none. We will open up audience communication again on this item. I'll just note that we have heard a lot of you so far in regards to this issue in general, but this is a separate motion. Is there any audience communication on this motion? I see none. Ms. Nash?
There's a jungle.
If you'd like to address, please come to the podium. We can't see you with these bright lights up here raising hands and whatnot.
Okay.
You can't believe how bright it is up here, so I can't see any of you.
You know, I've been looking at some of the city's structure and government, and I haven't heard the Human Relations Commission much, and it states, you know, right in their, you know, agenda for the city, that diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I'd hope this committee would be working hand-in-hand with them. We don't want to create more government, and I know, yeah, this is a part-time council position, so I know we have full-time people working on that, so I would highly recommend that. I don't think a lot of people in the community even know that we have this. It's a newly-named committee within Livonia.
Okay. What's your name for the record, please?
Yeah, it's Bob Zuner.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other audience communication.
Just.
Yes.
May I?
Yes.
Thank you to everyone who spoke, and, Mr. Zuner, the Human Relations Commission has been around for several decades, at least. The mayor did reinvigorate it two years ago, and the commissioners do serve as part-time commissioners. But your sentiment about us working with them is understood, but I just wanted to correct that for the record, so people do know it's been around, but the mayor did reinvigorate it, if you will. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on the motion offered by McCullough to refer to Committee of the Whole and supported by Vice President Toy?
Okay, so that's motion 11B.
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Seven zero, the matter is referred to the Committee of the Whole. That meeting will be scheduled in the near future. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number, well, let me explain something real quick as well. So that item is being referred to the Committee of the Whole. There was a first reading offered on the ordinance change as well. A vote on that, I suspect, will take place after the second reading, which I suspect as well will probably take place on August 22nd. So there are parallel tracks going on here, if that makes sense. One in regards to the flag specifically, and then another exploring options and ways to allow, you know, expression or support of different groups. Probably not doing that justice, but there's two different tracks going on, and I want to make sure that everybody understands that.
Mr. President?
This item's closed, so I'm not going to take any further comment on that.
We'd just like to make a point for the next meeting. If you indulge me for a second, please.
Sure, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will not be here on August 22nd. I will be gone on military duty, so I'd just like to make the record reflect that. So I will try to participate, whether that be via phone conference or virtual means. I've worked with the council office trying to schedule that, but I will be temporarily gone on military duty. But if the vote is taken on 22nd, I'll do my best to participate unless that vote is moved to another day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item number 12, a waiver petition.
No, sir. There's been no first reading.
You missed it, sir. I do, we're not going to do this at these meetings. The first reading was read, it's proceeding to a second meeting on August 22nd. That was clearly defined in the meeting, that's what happened over the last 20 minutes. Thank you, sir. Item 12, waiver petition, appeal of the denial of the Planning Commission regarding petition 2022-03-02-10, submitted by Accelerated Towing and Recovery, requesting a waiver use approval to operate a vehicle tow yard at 12780 Wayne Road, located on the east side of Wayne Road, just south of Schoolcraft Road, in the northwest quarter of Section 28. A public hearing was held on this matter on Monday, July 18th of 2022. Counsel, do we have direction?
Mr. President?
Mr. Barr?
I'll offer the denial, please.
Support.
We have a denial offered by Barr, support for the denial by McIntyre. Anybody from the council who'd like to address this matter? Is the petitioner here for item number 12, the waiver petition appeal? Is anybody here from Accelerated Towing and Recovery? I see none. Is there any audience communication on item number 12? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on item number 12.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item 12 is denied. Item number 13 is a request to authorize appropriation and expenditure from the Department of Public Works for the emergency repairs at the city fueling sites from budgeted funds. We have new data on this item, that's a letter from, providing information from DPW Director Don Roroff. Can I have a motion on this matter?
Don't move.
Motion by Toy.
Support.
Support by McCullough. Any, Mr. McCullough?
I always want to put this on regular, and just to follow up, I had asked for any preventative maintenance forms from Oscar Larson. Received in, as new data, really wasn't any preventative maintenance documents, but it was more of a memo that said that they were looking into, looking into the future for more of a preventative cycle. I'm going to support this, but this kind of goes towards our facilities and infrastructure needing to be more proactive than reactive. I'd hope that we can get on a preventative cycle with these changes, so we don't get in this pickle any further. Again, I will support this, but going forward, I want to make sure that we're doing things with more of a proactive approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Anybody else from the council? I see none. Any audience communication on item number 13? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on 13.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item 13 passes. That concludes our scheduled agenda for this evening. We will go back to audience communication. If anybody would like to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda this evening, please come to the podium at this time.
It's okay. I didn't. She only talked during.
Okay.
She only talked during the agenda.
Okay. Good evening, ma'am. You are limited to three minutes. Your name and address, please.
Lori Shook, on Granada. I wasn't planning on speaking again, but I would like to say I'm in favor of a.
We cannot do that because that is an agenda item.
The NDO is?
Not the NDO, you said you're in favor of.
The.
Okay, I apologize.
Having an NDO, yeah, for our city. I'm just listening to some of the comments here. If we all think that Livonia is a very welcoming city to all, I think we're kind of living in a, like, not reality. We know there's been issues at our schools, there's been issues with people taking signs, taking flags down. This isn't a flag issue, this isn't an NDO issue. So there is issues within our city, as far as respecting other people and other people's beliefs and other people's passions. And I guess it's just really sad to hear some of the comments that I've heard today as far as, just put it on your own yard, put it in your own, you know, on my house. I got Ring cameras to make sure people didn't take things down on my own property. So if you don't think that's happening, it is happening, and it's happening often. So anything that the council can do to advance a nondiscrimination ordinance, just to make people know that we are a welcoming city, and it would be one sign moving forward that I think would be very important, and it would mean a lot to me. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.[1765.41]